Read by Mr. Gans to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? As opposed, motion carries for the one. The clerk would read the addition.
To the passing of adding item 4C, resolution imposing moratorium on prospective permits for short-term rentals to the continuing to add an 5 and resolution on budget to recognize insurance proceeds for the visitor center.
Chair, maintain the motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move it.
Read by Mr. Barrett. Second by Mr. Gans. Any discussion? All in favor? As opposed? Case for the one. Do we have any departmental reports? Do we have the mayor's report? We'll go to council reports. Mr. Lawrence, council report. All right, Mr. Gans, Mr. Deming, Mr. Teasdale.
Well, since the mayor's not here, then just one announcement then. Ward 5 meeting is Wednesday, September 7th at 6:00 PM with the Snyder Recreation Center. And that meeting is open to the public. Wait, wait, I think I hear hooves on the rooftop. There it is, saying this helper. Just want to check with you. I've mentioned Parshich Park a couple of weeks ago. There's a, there's a broken, I guess podium with, where there's a memorial plaque on that and the benches have been removed and the water fountain is not working. If there's anything going down on that? Okay. Also, I know there's an inhabited RV on private property out there by the committee. I think you're familiar with that. Is that?
Couple of phone calls into the private property.
Okay. It's just, it's dragged on for a while. We need to wrap that up if we can. So the better. Do we have a date and time for the public hearing on the budget? I know that's coming up.
September 4th, I think, or whatever the Tuesday afternoon. I think the public hearing is two weeks from now.
September 6th, okay. September 6th at 5:30. Thank you. And can we determine a specific date to wrap up the non-departmental discussions? I know I hear from some of these folks who have requests into the city and they just want to know when is, when is that going to be discussed again? I know.
At 3 o'clock, I think we're prepared to, you know, to go all of those again. The whole.
Well, I know that some of them would like to be here, but they don't know what the topics are. When are we going to discuss that again? So that's why it'd be advantageous to get that information maybe when we get the agenda on Thursday. It's just, some people want to be here and they, some of them show up every workshop. Some of them did show up if they knew when their topic's going to be discussed.
You know, we're prepared to discuss all of it from here, every meeting on the way out.
Okay.
And we can advertise after the next hearing or?
Mayor, maybe we have a special meeting Tuesday, the 30th, on Tuesday, 30th, and maybe just have a special wrap-up meeting on the budget, including non-departmental interneals scenes or anything, maybe have a review of the final budget. My, my plan today, after our regular meeting, is to catch the rest of the departments today to have a discussion and maybe we schedule a meeting on the 30th to do a full review. In that way, we can be prepared for the meeting on the 6th.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I think, no, no, that's fine. I think that'd be a good idea. We don't have a meeting. We could spend a couple of hours now on a lot of this stuff doing. Thank you, Mr. Glavine. That concludes my report, my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Teasdale, Mr. Barrett.
I have no report.
Okay, I got a few items. I just need to get on the record. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Gans. He is going to represent, he's going to be one of the representatives on the Board of Directors for area now. So congratulations for your leadership and continued leadership. Thank you very much. Couple of loose ends. The potential of 646 Wetzel Drive put in a request for a owner who is trying to put in a driveway and some of the water, stormwater is being devoted in that area where she wants to put her driveway, asked for a solution. I've also asked for someone to contact me if they want to ride out there and look at it. So I just haven't heard from anyone in over a week. If we can kind of get that looked at, I'd appreciate it. Also, this is directed at Director Cool. Got a call today from one of the residents in Cedar Crescent subdivision. He is a physically challenged vet and he's having difficulty because the car is parking along the curb that he can't get to his mailbox. He can't get to his garbage and put his garbage or retrieve the garbage out because the car is blocking it. Maybe we can look at some sort of designation of a person that is physically challenged. Maybe we can look at something that could, you know, help out with cars being parked on the curb or sidewalks. Not the curb necessarily, but they're parking in the roadway beside the sidewalk. Okay. And then Hickman, recently I put in a work request to take a look at Hickman. There seems to be some chillers that have been dropped off. Peculiar, and I don't know if this is within code of law, there's someone living in a trailer or some kind of makeshift housing. And then they're selling the water. I don't know if they're within proper permits of selling water to residents and non-residents. They have a sign if they're advertising it. My understanding is that they have a well and they're trying to dispense of it.
I was in that text message. I'm not sure it's them. I think it's someone else down the street.
Okay.
That was just included in that text.
On Hickman Drive. Thank you, Councilman.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And then on 875 V Street, there's a pump station and there's some commercial trucks that are coming, encroaching on a resident that lives right there at the pump station on 875 V Street. And the asphalt is being broken up and they're rolling over the grass and putting in, kind of creating a new ditch and all that kind of stuff. I know someone suggested possibly ballots. But if we can look at whoever the trucks are delivering, the tanks there or maintaining it, if we just have some conversation to make sure we got that tightened up, the resident would appreciate it. And that concludes my report. I'd like to go back to the mayor's report.
I've got a brief report, no report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Glavine.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Glavine? No report. Anybody else say anything on the reports?
I had a couple. Since the mayor's sitting here, I want to check to see, have the, we talked about this a few times, like building concessions to, to Australia. If we take like 40,000, 212 courts, the pickleball courts, and we look at doing it at one time, that's huge. It's just getting bigger and bigger.
Right.
And if we want to do it, get bigger.
It's like pickleball court.
Pickleball court.
That's only capital projects.
And we got the 200,000, the concessions stands, all that stuff like that. But if we don't do it all, just 40,000, 12, inside the two, and it'd be finished. That'd be awesome. And they put, they have these big tournaments down here. And I love it. It's a plus for the city. So they said, yeah, simple, I'm looking to make sure we get that done, all at one time. So I thought, you should up here at Grand Lot Walkway on the bay, or they just put that at the end of resolutions and put it through the council.
Again, we're concentrating on the sign. We had a couple of meetings on the sign. That was her prime, you know, I think, point to make sure that's done. And that's where we're concentrating as far as recognizing her community efforts. So we did some pretty solid, you know, portraits and some of the dedications towards, you know, Ms. Glot. So that's where we're.
I can understand, I'm sure a lot to do with that, but I was talking about back there, just the black signs of walkway, it really changed and everything. You know, we discussed that earlier. And I suggest that if they were to put in more program equipment, they would have been poor. And to do that, they're going to take down, you know, the palm trees that were dedicated to the World War. But I was just, I think, since we had everything here on the beach, they'll put like a plaque with 12 flags and the 12 names on it. And a quick turn, they're going to hit trees down, wouldn't change them twice about eight or nine times. If they put a plaque out there with the rest of the stuff sitting there in the hog, I think they might more probably get you through all stuff, you get through all those. So if they put a plaque with those names on it, we'll put on it. And they'll only get one term left to worry about it. So I also suggest that that way, the palm trees that died, we just won't replace them. Because that was the club, they agreed, they just did palm trees at that time. I think we do the same thing with the plaque, they accomplish the same thing. The park, keep it rooted. The palm, the palm trees out there represent.
We'll take a ride there and, you know, see what needs to be done from the whole aspect of the park. I don't have any issues with, you know, doing something like that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We move on to citizens' comments. Do we have a total? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay.
Is it on? Can you hear it? Touch it, Chief. Yeah, I got it now. There it is. Thank you, Mayor.
I want to let the record show this is a report on short-term rentals by Chief Miller.
Yeah, this was requested last week and we put some things together. I got it earlier today, so I'm going to try to explain it. I read over it a couple of times. I think I understand it. But Captain Moran, the one who's responsible for putting this together, our intel analyst, is in the back of the room. So if I can't explain it, hopefully he can. So if you can read that from where you're at, we had received a request from the Atlanta Police Department or a member of the Atlanta Police Department concerning their ongoing study of potential public safety impacts on short-term designated properties with specific jurisdictions. And they had asked for some information from us in their study. And you can see the information that they asked for there. And IBR statistics by crime category, that's actually the National Incident-Based Reporting System that we use. All right, you can switch. So Biloxi Community Development Department provided information indicating there were 361 individual properties designated as short-term rentals in Biloxi, but open source information suggests the number could be as high as 461. So that's just short-term rentals that are probably operating that we really don't know about. You can see the reporting data indicated that point zero, point eight are really two-thirds of a percent of 1% are all the addresses, the address points in Biloxi where designated short-term rentals exist. Short-term rentals accounted for less than a half of percent of all the incident reports taken in Biloxi. 3% of the total addresses designated as short-term rentals recorded law enforcement reports. Of all the reports initiated at short-term rental locations, three were overtly related to short-term rentals or patrons. All right? And that, you know, this is, this is very difficult information to pull to begin with because there's a lot of variables in it. We have an address that we, that was designated as short-term rental, but it doesn't mean that the report that was taken there had anything to do with the short-term rental. It could have been a traffic stop in front of the location. It could have been somebody, a police officer, doing anything where he, you know, where are you at? Well, I'm in front of this address. So it's, so it'll, little bit hard to, to get you an actual, an actual account. Also, a lot of times, short-term rentals may be affiliated with an apartment complex where there may be four or five short-term rentals in the apartment complex. But that address, there may have been many calls to that address that may or may not have had something to do with short-term rentals there. So you can look at the, you can look at that slide up there. The address points in Biloxi, this is the total addresses that we have are 44,906. Total law incidences, that's, that's, that's where an actual written report was taken. We would have responded many, many more times, but an actual written report was taken 13,180 times in a year, in a year, from August of 2021 to August of 2022. Then you see that's broken down by total law incident locations and then locations where a specific address exists. So the total law incident locations could be an intersection, right? But the specific address would be the actual address itself. Total addresses designated short-term rental was 361. Incident locations designated short-term rentals, and this is where we actually had an incident, was 11. And then the total incidents at short-term rentals was 53. But I think out of that 53, I think, Louis, you looked at all 53, right? And there was three out of the all 53 that, there was three that actually mentioned or we could determine that it was actually related to a short-term rental. And then you can bump over to that last one. And out of that 53 calls, you can see 12 were, were, a citizen called us about it. Eight was a police officer that, that for whatever reason went to that location, whether he did a stop there, whether he followed somebody there, chased somebody there, or whether he saw something that he thought he needed to get out and check on. Eight were the property owners that called. And that could be anything from them calling, saying, hey, there was some damage, you know, to this unit. And we believe the people before, you know, that had it rented, you know, did the damage. It could be that. It could be a lot of things. Long-term residents, 23 have called about a short-term rental property problem. And then the short-term renter was two. And I'll, I'll take it that that was actual renters that had called themselves about an issue. So that's what we have. We can try to answer any questions for you on that, but it's very difficult to come.
Anyone have any questions for Chief Miller?
And I can make this available to you if anybody wants to just go over and take a look at it.
Mr. Deming, you have any questions?
I don't. I, I was waiting to see if Mr. Lawrence had some questions. I know he's got a moratorium up. From what, from the statistics, it, to me, and of course, statistics are interpretable in numerous ways, right? And but from what I hear is that they're not an overwhelming alarming cause for concern. I don't think there are any more, if we have statistics on, on long-term rentals, month-to-month rentals, or HUD housing, or things like that, I can almost sure that we'd see the same type of statistics for just about every neighborhood and every type of housing that we, we look at. We're talking about 53 calls or so out of 13,180. It's a very minute amount to raise red flags. In my opinion, again, perception is, is relative to the person perceiving it. And I'm sure George thinks that that's a cause for concern and we should probably hire a whole task force just for short-term rentals. But in my opinion, those statistics don't seem alarming. And I don't know what your take on that is, Chief, but that's what I heard.
Well, I just put the statistics together. And again, I want to reiterate that I don't believe at all that this is that accurate. You know, I think, I think Louis did the best he could do without reading thousands and thousands and thousands of reports. I think this is the best we could come up with.
Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Barrett? What do you say on the computers? Does anyone can pull up any of that on a computer or programs not set up like that for short-term rentals?
No, it, it'd have to be a, a computer at the police department that, that's set up to, to, out of our records management system. So everything's going to come out of our record management system. And that's not open source. Anybody except the police department is restricted by, by the Department of Justice.
So how many of those are short-term rentals apartments? You can't really tell.
It's very difficult, very difficult to tell if it happened at a short-term rental, if it's in an apartment complex. If that's what you're asking, it's very difficult to do.
But how many short-term rentals are listed?
Uh, there's 361.
361?
Right. But again, if you, if you look at some open source information online, that could be as many as, as 461. But obviously, there's people that are advertising short-term rentals that we don't, we don't have them listed as a short-term rental person in Biloxi. All right. I think Jerry has something he wants to say.
Mr. Glavine, would you like to cross-examine?
Three. No, we have 300.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gans?
I'm pretty much like Councilman Deming. You know, the numbers are not really known. The only thing that I'm really interested in is the area in district. And once we get over to our district, I think that will help us strengthen the news a little bit better. Okay.
Mr. Barrett?
I have, I have nothing at this point.
All right.
Mr. Teasdale, final word? Yes, thank you, Mr. Glavine. Just like to point out that I believe what the chief said was this is the best available data. I think if he was a betting man, I'm sure he's not, but if he was a betting man, he wouldn't bet anything, much less his farm on this data. So I don't know, you know, the validity or the reliability. It's just the information that was collected using probably the gentleman from Atlanta, maybe as a guide or something along this route. But that being said, to gather more relevant information to actually look at incidences of crime related to short-term rentals, probably you'd need a series of questions that every officer who waited every stop or visited every location would ask, and that takes time in addition to whatever they usually do. So I would just say probably, my opinion is that we're not really collecting relevant information. We're collecting what's easily collected, but we're really not collecting enough discrete information to draw any conclusions from this. Would that be accurate, Chief? Do you feel? Right. And it's a time thing. And then there's data entry and all that other stuff.
That's my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Director, do you have any more testimony you'd like to give?
Well, I was just going to add one thing, that the chief mentioned that there were 461 that are, appear to be in Biloxi that are off the radar. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're in Biloxi because we check on that a great deal. That means that they're just actually using Biloxi because of the name recognition. They could be in the county, they could be in Ocean Springs or somewhere else. I have Frederick checking on this every day. He's constantly pulling up the internet day in and day out. And there are a number of them that will be listed as Biloxi, but they're not actually in Biloxi.
Thank you, Director. You missed up there.
Mr. Glavine?
You got one more?
So on the books, we only have 361 short-term rentals. How many rooftops do we have in the city, just off the top of your head?
I think John had mentioned there were 44,000.
44,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to citizens' comments. We have a total of 45 minutes allotted. You raise your hand and when you're recognized, come up to the front, sign in, legibly your name, your address, and state it in the microphone clearly for the clerk to record. We'll be kept on the side. Anyone on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Sharon Davis. I'm the head librarian for Biloxi Libraries. I just want to let you know the local history and genealogy department is having a program this Saturday at 11 o'clock at the downtown library. And it's going to be presenting for the first time, a lot of images that have been donated to us. It's focusing on two separate collections that have been given to us. The first one is the Sun Herald Collection. When they closed that building down, we got their editorial archives. So a lot of those images that they have in their archives are in the middle of being processed right now and cataloged. So we're going to have a lot of those on display. Also, there is a local photographer named Chauncey Henman. He was a professional photographer in the 50s, all the way to the 80s. And he took a wonderful array of amazing photographs. Some of it's simply buildings, some of it's architectural things, some of it's weddings. He had a really broad range. And there are literally thousands and thousands of photographs that we were given. So this program is going to highlight some of the items from those collections that have been processed. And we were able to do this very quickly, to do the program and the processing by a grant from, I'm going to have to read it because it's one of those long names, American Rescue Plan Humanities Grants for Libraries. So it's a national competitive grant we applied for. We received $10,000 from them, and that has paid for equipment, temporary assistance to do scanning and digitizing so we can make these things available online as well as in print version. And also housing and storage for them because they all need to be cared for in a very specific way. So we'd love to see you there. And if you can't make it, if you check out our Facebook page, we have two posts a week from both of those collections we've had through the summer. Our latest one had a reach of 55,000 people. So we're getting a lot of exposure from it. And they're just really fun to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? My left, your right? Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Come on up.
My name is Toni Darrow, and I was just sitting in the back listening to the word moratorium for the short-term rentals being used a couple of times. And so I'm here for something else. And so it's a short-term rental related situation here in Biloxi. So I'm asking if you guys do review that, you're going to talk about it, that there's some real careful consideration with doing that because just like my clients, as I'm a Realtor and a property manager, there's a lot of people in my line of work who have clients who's renovating properties, that are going to buy properties to use them as short-term rentals. And so there's a moratorium. They basically just bought these properties that they can't use them as intended. And with that being said, they're not going to be able to afford to keep them because their business model was based on a projection of numbers that's not going to be valid if they can't get a short-term rental permit. So, you know, just, I would just ask for some really careful consideration to be given to that because, you know, especially in zones like CB or, you know, the high-density residential areas where it's a used by right or a conditional use, if people already have properties there, they're not going to be able to do it if there's a moratorium, but they have the use. They have that right. So they're, you know, just wanted to mention that there's a lot of people, millions of dollars at stake right now if there's a moratorium passed on the short-term rentals.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else that I may ask that would like to come up and speak during this portion of our agenda? For being a mayor, this portion of our agenda is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Clerk would read the ordinance.
Orders to pre-assigning my permanent for several parcels of land from RS10 family residential to RM30 multifamily residential for property located 139, 139, Bader Drive and 15 unaddressed parcels, 1452.
Motion by Ms. Nevin. Second by Mr. Deming. This is a first reading. We're going to the item B. Second by Mr. Dinnon, this is a first reading, we're going to the item B.
Orders to, uh, excuse me, the land development ordinance revoked at table 2343, there are living required, and there is facing to regulated business and protected uses in districts.
This was moved by Mr. Lawrence, and it was seconded by Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Lawrence, by Jerry.
What we're doing here is, now that we have medical cannabis as a, a part of what we do, allowing Biloxi, we're taking the regulated business use table that's in the land development ordinance, we're adding the cannabis dispensaries to that table, and we're showing, we're just following what the state law says, we're showing that, uh, cannabis dispensaries have to be at least a thousand feet from daycares and schools. We already have the provision in there for the places of, places of worship, so all we're doing is adding in exactly what the state requires.
Okay. Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
No.
We should move it.
Mr. Creel, I, this, uh, we're removing the facility frequented by sixteen to eighteen-year-olds. I saw that the distance is, is stricken, those words aren't, but that's the intention. I, I guess what I'm asking is, is this an error, is this like something that was on the photocopy, or are we actually striking that out of here?
No, ac- actually, we started out with that under consideration, but places frequented by six to eighteen years old is very subjective. I mean, that would eliminate anything close to a convenience store, baseball stadium, or anything else, so, it's not something that you can, we, we understand that language being in there for the adult entertainment, which is also a part of this table, but for the medical cannabis dispensaries, uh, at the planning commission, it, it was decided that, uh, that was a little bit too subjective, so, uh, that was taken out.
But, in the state's infinite wisdom, they actually included the waiver for certain facilities, and so, I'm gonna make an amendment, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to amend this to include the language from the state law that provides a waiver for medical dispensaries to reduce the distance from places of worship, daycares, and schools, to what the statutory language says, the law. And, and, um, it just gives the ability for the administrator of those facilities, whether it's the church, the daycare, or the school, to sign off on reducing that, that required distance of a thousand feet to five-hundred feet. Um, and this is in the language of the state law, I think we spoke earlier, and you are okay with adding that language, so, I'm gonna make a motion to amend this and add the suggested language.
The chair asked that I give Councilman Barrett, uh, on the regular, uh, discussion, and then we'll come back to your amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dinnon. Mr. Barrett, I have nothing, okay, go ahead and continue.
I, I will, uh, just restate my, my, uh, my motion for an amendment to the text language in the ordinance to reflect the state's waiver inclusion.
All right, so to clarify, Mr. Dinnon is, uh, making amendment to, clarify and adhere to the state's recommendation that anyone in, in these categories can apply for a waiver or submit a waiver on behalf of the operator of the cannabis business.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we would keep it at the five-hundred feet unless, uh, the school or daycare offers a waiver.
It's the other way around, it stays at a thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless the school, the daycare, or the, or the church.
Reduces it.
Reduces it.
I got you.
Right.
Thank you. Is that clear on that?
Yeah.
It's, just a minute, it's been motioned, just a minute, it's been motioned and seconded, uh, now we have discussion.
Okay. Uh, what I was gonna suggest, if you'd like to table this, and let us put the language in, we can bring a clean copy back to the council, so that y'all could vote on it at the same time, it's, it's entirely up to you.
Mr. Gads, will you withdraw your mo, with your second? I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll make a new motion to table it.
Okay, I'll withdraw.
So I'll withdraw my motion for the amendment, and I will request, uh, that the council consider a motion to table this until the planning commissioner, the director of, of community development can add the language.
Mr. Dinnon is making a motion to table subject to call. You will have a second.
A second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Gads, in addition is discussion. Anyone? All in favor of the amendment to table subject to call? All opposed? I'm opposed. I, did, did you get a full count on that? Okay.
Six one.
Six one.
Six one, okay. All right, it's tabled, we'll move on to the next item, the consent agenda, need a motion? No, we got. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, hold on.
I'm sorry, I missed the moratorium, so, sorry, Mr. George? Item C, the clerk would read, uh, just a minute, clerk would read, item C.
Impending a moratorium on the issues of any prospective municipal owners of short-term rentals in RM20 multifamily and RM30 high-density multifamily.
Heard by Mr. Lawrence, you will have a second. A second, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, discussion, Mr. Lawrence. Yeah, Jerry?
What I knew it did say, I'd ask Jerry to look at it, to see what it was based on, he suggested the six months, like, look at what's going with the laws and regulations, just go to all, we're gonna go, saying, take the police report, and the chief can, I saw what the purpose of it, and Jerry suggested the six months, because I thought it was a good thing. So, Jerry, you have a second, I want you to, how we wrote that.
Well, the, the, actually, what happened, we pulled back up the moratorium where this had been presented to the council one time before, and the six months was already in that moratorium, and at that time, um, I think there were some other things that were involved where it looked like it was gonna take six months, but, uh, we're, we have the phase one of the overlay district that'll be going to the planning commission, I believe, next week, next Thursday. Now, we're gonna have to do that in phases in order to get it to a level where we can present it to the planning commission, and to the council, for them to be able to look at each area one at a time. It may take six months to do that, um, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep bringing them to the council as they get through the planning commission, so, we're not gonna waste any time on it.
Okay.
I just, I just thought at this time, it was gonna, I had to clarify, like, Paul Allen, Charles, Charlie, look at, look at, that was the purpose of this, to make sure we have everything in place, it won't all fall on us. What I wanted to stop all that, is just putting it under control.
Mr. Tisdale? Yeah, it's, it's just a quick review from our, uh, the council's approval of the first short-term rental, which was probably about, I wanna say, three and a half or four years ago, Jerry, that'd be like?
Mr. Fosters, yes, sir.
On Balfour subdivision, and, um, I voted against it at that time, simply because we had no ordinance, zero ordinances on the book related to short-term rentals, and we had a couple of workshops, and, uh, we're still having workshops, and still having moratoriums, and I, I, I would hope that with this proposed moratorium, that we would finally devote the time, and I think we are, with, uh, with what the community development department is doing now, related to short-term rentals, where they're permitted, uh, where they're conditional use, what do we wanna do if we're studying this overlay, we've kinda been behind the curve, and we're not alone, there are other cities in the same, well, in the same boat, but we've, I felt, really been behind the curve, uh, since this topic first surfaced in Biloxi.
We actually have a phrase for this now, you know, short-term rental, the initials S-T-R, we're calling it Star Wars, so that, um, everyone will be familiar, that's what we use around the department over there.
Right, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm pleased that we're moving forward, and I think we need to take the time and nail this down. Uh, what gets folks, gets folks and neighbor, in, in residential neighborhoods particularly is the creep of short-term rentals, and what the implications are in terms of setting precedents, so hopefully, we'll be able to resolve some of these, once this phased-in overlay is presented to the council, so I would urge my colleagues to vote for this moratorium, that gives community development pretty much time to finish what they've started.
Thank you. Mr. Gads?
Yes, um, and Dr. Tisdale brought up something interest, interesting, um, when Mr. Barry Foster first came, I think I was sitting in the planning commission, and we were trying to figure this out, uh, Mr. Creel and myself, and we literally kinda set the blueprint of trying to get this started. Um, I agree, we, we need to do the moratorium, but one of the things that I would hope is, if you finish with it early, or if it takes more time, then we could do it when it's finished. So, um, if you finish it up in a couple of months, then maybe we can move past this year. Um, six months is a long time, and there are people out there waiting, so, I would, I would push this out, once you're completed, versus putting a timeframe on it. So, I would move.
Say, up to six months, maybe six months.
Okay, up to six months, okay, yeah, yeah, uh, exactly, and that's what I'm saying, up to six months. So I would move to a mandate to be up to six months, or when, um, community development is finished.
Okay, I'm estimating purpose.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to that amendment, move on to discussion. Title. Um, Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Dinnon?
Can you come back to me?
Come back to you, Mr. Barrett.
No comments at this time.
Okay. Mr. Tisdale, additional comment?
I mean, I saw listed this, uh, resolution, this, uh, moratorium, it really deals only with RM20 and RM30 zoning classifications, uh, and I would assume that would include limited business as well.
Well.
It doesn't say that in the resolution, but I, I think the previous speaker during citizens' comments was worried about folks who may be in the process, so, we're not discussing that this doesn't study, um, those commercial districts where they're permitted by law, we're just talking on the basis of this resolution about RM20 and RM30 residential multifamily, conditional uses.
That's the ones that seem to be the most controversial, or the ones that are, the ones in LB and NV that are conditional use also, but do not seem to be as much of a problem as these.
All right, thank you. I, I have a couple of comments, uh, I, I got a problem with moratorium on anything, whether it's casinos, short-term rental, we're having, uh, without a little bit more time, uh, to give a heads-up, uh, to the business community, or, or to other entities that may have an interest. You know, we, these short-term rental cases come before the planning commission, they vet it, recommend it, comes to us, and we take the time, whether we like it or not, we take the time to look at it, listen to the councilperson in that ward, listen to the residents in that ward, and then weigh the decision, does it fit, uh, in that particular zone, and what may be around that zone. Uh, so I'm struggling with supporting the, the moratorium at this time, without having maybe an additional workshop or something of that sort, so that's, that's my two cents. Um, move to, Mr. Barrett?
Um, I, I agree with Kenny to an extent, um, I, I believe that, I mean, this is what some people do for a living, and at the end of the day, it goes before the planning commission, and it comes before the council, and there's a vote, sometimes it's seven eight, sometimes it's four-three, sometimes it's five-two, whatever, the two or three people that vote no aren't happy with the outcome, but that's why we have seven people sitting on this board, um, and we vote, and there's times that I don't like the outcome of a vote, and there's times that others on this board don't like the outcome of a vote, but, that's why we're out here, that's why we have a planning commission to make recommendations to us. Um, I, I agree with Mr. Glavine, if we are gonna do this, I, I would like to, I would like to have a workshop to see exactly what the right process would be, and I will not support six months, even if we went to that, I would support something more along the lines of two months, and we best of lucks and get it done, because we are a tourist town, and like it or don't like it, short-term rental is a part of a tourist town, and, um, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Dinnon?
I don't have much more to say than, than Mr. Glavine eloquently said, and, um, and followed by Mr. Barrett. The one thing I would remind everyone is that this moratorium, and I'm assuming by the language, the word specifically, means that it's only reflective of RM20, RM30, right? It doesn't affect any other district, this proposed moratorium, if it were to pass, it would only, it would only, um, prevent short-term rentals, new short-term rentals from appearing or applying in RM20, RM30, correct?
Kerry and I had that conversation right before the meeting today, and I asked the same question, does it specifically mean that, and since Mr. Lawrence, you know, is authoring the moratorium, we were gonna ask him if that's specifically what he intended to have in there, so.
Okay, uh, was that the intent?
Right. RM20, RM30.
No, nonetheless, I'm not in favor of the moratorium, I just wanted to clarify exactly what is on the table. Um, I think that we are a public entity, and I think public notices is extremely, an extremely important, um, aspect of, of due process that everybody's provided, and, being that this does interfere with the business ongoing of many people, we probably should table this until we can get adequate notice to the operators in our industry that, that provide these types of services. Um, so, that's all I have for the present.
Um, so I choose not to waste my breath on the short-term rentals anymore, you know how I stand, but I'm going to specifically say that I'm not for a moratorium at all period. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gads, anything?
Yeah, um, I made an amendment, uh, to, because, um, we'd want to know the findings, and so, I agree with you, Kenny, on the workshop, that, so, my amendment would be, uh, until the families are presenting a workshop, and I'll leave it at that, but six months, I think, is, um, too long, but I do think until the families are brought before the council in a workshop format.
So, is your amendment to include a workshop, or are you just saying?
Include a workshop on the end of it.
Okay. Okay. Everybody understanding that? Do you have a second on Mr. Gads' amendment to include a workshop? And after the workshop, it would go into effect for a six-month moratorium?
Up to six months, I remember you said up to.
Okay.
If he completes, if he completes it before six months, or before the council, so that we can.
So, let me, let me try to restate it, your, your amendment is a six-month moratorium on the condition that we hold a workshop, and have those findings agreed with the, with the, uh, six-month?
Up to.
Up to six months.
Up to, I remember that, up to.
All right, you got it first, I have a second.
I, I make that second.
A second by Mr. Tisdale, discussion.
Just to be sure I understand what I'm seconding.
Just one second. Discussion, this goes back to you, Mr. Gads.
Go back to Tisdale.
All right.
Because he wants to second it, so he wants to know.
To rephrase it, um, there's a moratorium for up to six months, or until the community development concludes their study, and following the conclusion of their study, there'll be a workshop for the council.
Absolutely.
On what they're proposing, or what their findings are.
Absolutely, there we go.
Yeah, I'll stick with that second, thank you.
I, I will agree to a workshop, but I will not agree to vote on a six, up to a six-month moratorium, um, just by sticking it, well, basically voting on the same thing that's on this piece of paper, except we're sticking that we're gonna have a workshop in it. Um, I will agree to have a workshop, and then go forward from there and see what we decide, but I can't support a moratorium without first knowing what, um, what we're looking at as far as everything.
Okay, going back to Mr. Lawrence, any, any discussion?
The six months, like Jerry said, was in there, but I could, I don't know, I'm just trying to get something straight, what a legal right would be, and it's all about conditional uses is the problem, that's all it's short-term, it's all about the conditional uses, that's what we have all about, and all the discussions on, so I'm just trying to clarify all that, so I might not understand that, and your own condition issue is of short-term, or costly, possible, well, using or not, so if I want to, now you better look at what you wanna do. Like, Phil said, like, we have the rules and regulations in place, we'll put them in place, there's, all we're doing, conditional use is the main problem we have, a short-term rental, somebody, you guys, I put up a short-term, I'm in downtown, everybody says the thing, as long as short-term into conditional use, you know, the problem, you actually don't get the laws that we put in place. I can make a short-term, I'm going downtown, everybody says the thing, as well, short-term to conditional use, you know, is the problem, you actually don't get the laws that we put in place, so I just try to clarify the laws, that's all.
Yeah, and just a really quick comment, if he's finishing two months, we can have the workshop and complete this and be done in less than two or three months, that's why we said up to.
Got you. Anyone else have any comments?
After we take the six-month jobs, that's a, we don't want to call it, the six months was sitting in there, we didn't create that, right Jerry? We just picked up what was there before. Nobody suggested six months, it was already in the language.
Well, the reason, the reason that was in there is because, you know, twice before the council has asked us to go back and consider removing short-term rental from residential altogether and create an overlay district, and we've done that twice, and each time we brought it back to the council, the overlay district failed, so basically what we did is go back and pull up the same language from that last order that the council had sent out about creating the overlay district, so that you're kind of reviewing something y'all have already reviewed twice. And two, let me just add one, one thing real quick, you're in a position right now where every, and we did this on purpose, where every short-term rental in RM twenty and RM thirty does have to come to you for approval, Councilman Glavett stated it when he was talking a while ago, that y'all have oversight over every short-term rental that comes in that's a conditional use right now, so you can continue to do that, or you can go with the moratorium until we get through, it's really up to you.
Okay, any other discussion? I just want to add, what I understand this amendment to say is that we're putting a moratorium on it, and we're, we're trying to get a workshop established. It isn't a workshop and then a moratorium, so you're voting on a moratorium if you vote for the amendment, up to six months.
Up to.
Up to six months. Okay, call for the question, all in favor of the amendment, all opposed. Amendment first for three?
I'd like to make a motion to table this and to schedule, subject to call, and schedule a workshop.
Okay, motion to table and schedule a workshop, do you have a second?
A second, huh?
Second by Mr. Lawrence, discussion, discussion, Mr. Lawrence, any other discussion, all in favor, those opposed, I think it was five two. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, move on to the consent agenda, do you have a motion?
I'm a second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, and C, it's all about the rubber safety, surfacing.
Sure. Thank you.
Sir, we had originally approved the one for tile, but they cannot do anything until like November, so we went on ahead and did the pour-in rubber, like what is that point cadet Plaza in at the lighthouse, so it's easier to clean, easier to fix.
All right, just double checking, and on E, on the Sanger, is this another extension of days, the times, the money, the Sanger? Sanger, I said, the Sanger, E, I said restated grant agreement, so we'd...
I think this is the second, let me read this.
Razor's in the back there, did you have, mayor?
Wait a minute, let me read this one. Yeah, this is another part of the MDA, two million dollars to finish the exterior of the Sanger.
Say again?
Two million dollars to finish the exterior of the Sanger from the MDA.
Some of them tied up in it, this is probably receiving two million more.
Well, receiving part of the funds to finish it, we've, I think we're into it, 4.7 million with the, you know, the last exterior components to be done, that's part of the original funding. Is that right, Razor?
Every year, we have to redo the Sanger grant because it's established by the legislature. This is just rolling forward what we've already had, it's our grant balance as of February, when it was submitted to the legislature, they're sending us a new one for the same amount, there's no change to the budget.
Thank you. And I, on the old brick house, we, I said we're going to exterminate her, are we using that building for anything?
I don't think it's been rented for a while.
Somebody just shut down?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale, so you're up, Mr. Tisdale?
Thank you, on item K, it deals with copiers, and I, if I read it, I think we're looking at six copiers, which is stated in the third whereas, but then, when we get down to section two, it refers to ten copiers. Currently, I was just a little confused, are we looking at six, I think we're looking at six copiers, but I may have misread it, and I wasn't sure, I see ten copiers and six copiers.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah, this is K, and I tell you, if you look at the... If you look at the third whereas, each of the six subject copiers being retained, blah, 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 and then you go down to section two, there's authorized to accept any, so disagreements, yada, 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 for each of the ten copiers. I'm assuming it's six because what's listed on the, I think it's a copy and paste error, on exhibit A, you've got six copiers listed, that's all, I'm just trying to clarify that.
The agreement is six, and the language says ten, I believe that's a conflict, right?
That's correct, that's the way I read it, so I'm assuming it's six because that's what's, that's what's listed in the exhibit, all right, so we're talking about six copiers, thank you, that's it. Mr. Guines?
Judge, that's the last question about the brick house, that's the only one I had. I'm good.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Denon?
I'm just a no on J.
You're what?
I have a no on J.
Right.
I want that.
Okay. Did you get that, clerk, did that, he's a no on J? Mr. Denon is going to vote no on J. Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
All right, any objections? Anybody have any objections to any, or other than Mr. Denon? And being known to go to vote on the consent, all in favor, those opposed, motion carries, move on to, just a note about code enforcement, the case has been resolved, so we do have, we don't have a hearing today. Thank you, Director. Motion on the routine, all right, moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Tisdale, anything, thank you, Mr. Lawrence?
Well. Good afternoon, council. So last Tuesday, we spoke about the 2.15 million, we did receive that, 2.15 million from NEMA last Thursday, and we have additional 1.57 million that's already in step four or five, it's been there about four days, so we should have it here in the next 10 business days.
So we're standing on top of it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on the routine? They're being known, call for the question, all in favor, those opposed, motion carries, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor, those opposed, we adjourn, we'll just take a brief minute or two for the clerk to get reset, and we'll start our special meeting on the budget.
Mayor? I don't have to stay for that.